Tuesday, June 30, 2020, special call meeting. Before we get started, I want to ask Commissioner Richard to give us a communication.
That's great. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to gather together again. Lord, we pray that you bless our meeting, keep us safe. Lord, keep us focused. Lord, help us to have the insight necessary to be able to make decisions for our community. Pray God your blessings upon our first responders, our medical staff. Lord, those who are out fighting the fight of freedom, Lord, for our country, and those who are maintaining law and order in our community. We pray, God, that you'll keep them safe, keep them safe from this virus, keep them safe from those who would do them harm. And, Lord, all the things that will happen tonight, we pray we bring honor and glory to the name of Christ, we pray in his name. Much allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, sir.
Please sit down, sir.
Moving slowly today. Just real quick, y'all, everybody know that Commissioner Stapleton wanted to be here, but had some other business he had to do, so I'm sitting there for him. Will we roll into the first thing on our agenda, approval of a new resolution to declare a state emergency due to COVID-19? They had an hour seventeen point one. What's the first?
Second.
Motion, that's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on to number two, approval of authorization for county administrators to execute CARES Act funding agreement. Here's anything on that.
It's pretty self-explanatory. This is on?
No.
If, uh, we're working on it.
The question is, board, go ahead and authorize me to get this underway. It's very important that we do so. We've gotten tentative approval from the state on purchasing a couple of ambulances. We need to place the order right away because the manufacturer has located chassis for two of them, and we hurry up and order because they need to be completed by the end of the year. So that's all, we need to go ahead and expedite this agreement. Now, what do we think?
Chairman Harris, may I ask you? You have a motion from Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gantle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kerry. Moving into number three, any additional business the board needs to consider for guarding COVID-19? All right. The other thing I see is Mr. Waldron was here as usual. Sir?
Thank you. Apologize for my appearance. We did a testing in Lefae County today, and it saw 236 people. It was pretty strong, of which 140 were from Swanee County. Eighty-six were from Lefae, which is still pretty strong. I appreciate coming for you just to give you an update. We are beginning to see the test results come in from our mass testing that's been taking place in the month of June. Today, we were announcing 58 new cases. That brings our number up to 498 cases. Again, a majority of all these are connected to our testing on 620 and on 623. Out of those testings, we are averaging about a 17% to 18% positivity. So the folks that we are seeing coming through the testing sites, about 17% to 18% are testing positive. Majority of those individuals are asymptomatic. That is, they do not have symptoms. They're coming through without symptoms and being tested. To date, we have tested 4,162 folks in Swanee County. 3,659 have been negative or 88%, which is a relatively high number. As we continue to test, we will see more positivity. The more you test, that increases your chance of finding more positive cases. Last week, I reported the average age of those that were tested in Swanee County is 45. This week, it has dropped to 42. So that tells me we're testing younger people. And in the 58 cases we reported out today, 26 are under the age of 25. What we are seeing that's trending, we are seeing families that have the COVID. In other words, the dad, the mom, the grandparent has, it's positive, and it's spreading through that family. So we are seeing whole families that are testing, tested positive. We did announce today death number 20, which is an individual passed away several weeks ago. The medical examiner has completed their review. And because the individual was positive at the time of death, although they were in hospice, the medical examiner has contributed that to COVID as being, not the cause of death, but being as a contributory factor. And because of that, we will commit and show in our, as shown in our data, that we do have a death. And we will be announcing one, an additional death. I talked to the medical examiner's office this afternoon. So tomorrow, we should be announcing case number 21, which was back from early in June. So if the medical examiner does review these cases, he does go through and look at causes of death, looks at the medical records, and if it can be attributable to COVID, then we're notified, and we have to report that out as a, as a death that has a contributory factor of COVID. I did speak, I didn't get to speak with Rick this week, but I did talk to Steve Nelson, who is, uh, his number two man. The hospital last week saw a huge surge, and as I mentioned to y'all on Tuesday, saw a huge surge in occupancy. They're currently at 93% capacity. However, he says this week is much, much better, and they currently only have 11 COVID patients in the hospital. You recall last week, we talked about four of those were intubated. There's only one person now in the hospital that's intubated. He says others COVID patients, they are what they call low acuity, which means they're not extremely sick, that they're able to handle that and address that. He said this week has been a much, much better week for them. Also, today at Swanee Healthcare, the state has a crew in that's going back and retesting all of the staff and all of the residents, as they will continue to do that throughout the next several weeks in all of the nursing home facilities in the state of Florida. I did talk, speak with, communicated with Raven, who is the administrator, and she indicated things were going extremely, extremely well in that facility today, so I was real pleased. As I have reported out before, Suri Place has six residents that have tested positive. All six have been moved to a COVID facility, which is designated with a COVID wing to monitor those patients and work with those patients. And so those, those have, have been transferred out. It's been a busy time. We are working with the state and trying to discuss for the months of July and August, looking at regional testing. I know that my staff has just done a tremendous job, an outstanding job, but the heat is taking its toll. If I look red-faced today, it's because it was hot today. And, of course, wearing that protective equipment that our nurses have to do gets extremely hot. We try to keep them fan down, ice water under a big oak tree, a shade tree, but it's, it still gets hot. That was a large number we saw today in Lefae County. But we're working with the state to look at regional testing opportunities, that they can bring an admission and a team in and do testing. And we're trying to establish some dates and times that we can bring those folks into our community. They're talking about potentially being able to test for a full day and a thousand people. And that would open it up to where anybody could travel in, in our counties. And we're looking at Swanee, Lefae, Jefferson, Madison, and Taylor. And they would also have opportunities for testing sites in their counties. But we've been on the call today, and we'll have another call tomorrow and Thursday to try to work out the details on that. Because at this rate, we can't continue to test 300-plus people in the, in the mornings. It's just getting hotter and hotter and hotter, and I've got some concern for our folks. So we're going to try to look at some resolutions and some solutions. We've been in talking with Greg Scott. We've been talking with the emergency operations there, and the sheriff's office, potentially trying to find some sheltered places, but we'll continue to work on that. Right now, there's still a commitment from the governor and state surgeon general to test 2% of your population. I can tell you that for the month of June, we have exceeded that. We've tested almost 4% of our, of our population in Swanee County. That's, that's a strong number. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. I do have a comment about, you know, any events that are coming up, especially July 4th. I strongly encourage folks to please, if you're going to be out in public, to use mitigation measures, which includes social distancing, face masks, hand sanitizing. If you're sick, please stay home and do not attend these, these events. Phase two is in effect, which means gatherings of less than 50 people. But I know that there are events taking place, whether it's weddings, unfortunately, funerals, birthday parties, and so forth. I just want to encourage folks to please take some personal responsibility and monitor where you are, who you're with, and what you're doing, because that's how we're going to get out ahead of this, because we do have COVID in our community. We are seeing younger people with COVID, and we're trying to stop the spread. So with that, Commissioner, Vice Chairman, I'd be glad to answer any questions I can.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Kerry.
I just have a comment. Thank you for educating us, and know I listen, and know I understand. And it's very valuable knowing what's out there, talking about the unknown, and talking about the Brady and the funeral, et cetera. We do have to be cautious and careful, you know, watch where you're around. It's, you know, you're not so many people, so you try to be distant away from it, somehow put you back that way. But I appreciate your return and your, your letting go of, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I, I've joked about, we've all heard about the seven degrees of Kevin Bacon, but you can connect everybody back to Kevin Bacon. Well, I call it the seven degrees of COVID. We can connect somebody to, I mean, it's, it's that prevalent. And just attending these events, just be safe. I mean, social distancing, you know, unfortunately, I'm a big hugger and handshakeer, and I'm not able, you know, I, I've tried to stop from doing that because we just want to be safe. Just use good common sense and practical, practical actions to help us get ahead of this. We are out of masks, though. We've tried to order more masks, and at this time, they're, they're on backboard, so we do not have them. We've given out almost 45,000 masks in Swanee County, or over 45,000 masks.
Thank you, Ms. Special. Every week, I want to ask you this question, most of the time I do, and that is active cases versus total cases. First of all, does the state yet have a formula other than the two weeks?
They do, they, they do not.
They're not counting when somebody comes, when somebody testing negative after, retesting negative, they're not taking them off of the list and keeping track of it. So at this point, what would you say our number is based upon the few weeks of active cases?
Well, unofficially, because we do not have a, a state formula that they, they have provided us, but unofficially, looking at the two-week period of opportunity because of being symptomatic, and we, as I mentioned last week, some folks are positive longer, some folks are not. So, but, but, you know, looking at a 14-day incubation period of, of a potential positive, we're up to approximately 188 folks that would have recovered.
Second question for you is just really your opinion more than anything else. And I don't know how much weight you want to lend to that opinion, but for the past week or so, we have reports that the CDC was estimating that as many as 25, 26 million Americans have or have had COVID. I don't know where they get these numbers, I don't know where they're, they're getting these formulas from. But having said that, if that is the case, wouldn't that say that our death rate is a whole lot lower than what it is right now, based upon the numbers that we actually have?
And I have not seen their numbers, because the CDC puts out a lot of information daily. But yes, if, if that were the case, that, that they're estimating that number, then certainly, based upon the actual deaths that we've seen, the percentage would be much, much lower. You know, a lot of folks were talking about being sick back in November, December, with flu-like symptoms. And I, I think potentially, we're talking, we, you know, we've, we've been dealing with COVID since January, it hasn't hit our area up until March. So, so it's been here for, for a while. So I think that, I think there are a lot of folks that have already been sick, and potentially, if they had been tested, probably would have tested positive for COVID.
Yeah, we spoke earlier today.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to get you to answer that question publicly about retests. Have somebody sent a Facebook post earlier that was claiming that every time there's a retest on a positive case to see if they're negative, that it counts back into the positive number?
No. Yes, I'll be glad to, to explain. Anytime somebody is tested, that is counted towards a test. If you test positive one time, it's counted only one time. So if you continue to get retested and you're still positive, it's still only counted as one positive. But every time you get retested, it, it's counted. Now, if you test and you're negative, that's going to count as a test, as part of the daily testing, but you're negative. And if you come back and, and retest again, that's going to count for another test. But if you test positive this time, then that positive will count. So every, we've had several folks, or, we've seen folks that have tested numerous times, and they were positive. We only count that, that case one time. But every time you are tested, it counts as part of the testing.
That's a good question that I was going to ask, that group of retesting.
And right now, we're seeing a lot of folks come through that are retesting.
So have all the tests come back from the 20th through the 23rd? I know there's some big test days for you, and I think last Tuesday was a big test day as well.
Yeah, that was the 20, that was the 23rd. Yes, sir. We're, we're changing labs. We've, have not been completely satisfied with the response from the lab. Matter of fact, their website database went down Sunday for about six or seven hours, and it negated our efforts in trying to get results and call people. So we've, we're moving to a different lab that we hope to expedite. But we've got just about all the test results in, but a small percentage.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Kerry?
Thank you, sir. Randy, I didn't call you today, though.
Please, sir. Thank you.
I, I certainly will. And again, once we, if we can get some state-supported help in here, and then they can test, you know, for a longer period of time, we can see more folks. I'll keep you abreast of those dates as we, as we move forward. It's getting, it's getting hot out here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all. If you have any questions, anytime, y'all, just give them a shout. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here in the department, got anything? Anything? How about anyone from the public? Anyone? Attorney?
I'm good for today, thank you.
Mr. Harris? Richard?
I do have a question about the Park Street Act. At what point, or, I don't know, you can talk. I would like to know if, number one, which springs are open, or which are, and which are closed?
All the springs are, they're willing, and a little of the closed. The crawl is open, we told them, but we'll recommend, true. River height, it's probably about 18 foot to Bradford. And then just about 13 to 14, we will, is going to open that up. It's dropping last, I would, it's been a few days since I looked, but it's dropping just a few inches a day, and then it's attempting to pop back up, because of what's happening in Georgia.
Are you still, are we still seeing people cross the, the cable and come on anyway?
That's, it's as many as they want, of course.
And the sheriff's not here, so I can't ask him, if he's, how he's doing that. And any, any word on summer programs, anything that happened, anything that pulled back this week?
We are looking at stroke lessons next week. We're not using the shower rooms, it's just restaurants only. The sanitation of the water sanitizes, but it's chlorine-based. There's smaller classes, smaller groups. We've still got some closeness in lessons, but they're called some guidelines, they're national guidelines. The public swim, our numbers are half, so they're under 50. It's been, 40 is about a magic number. Day camp, we're, we're around 40 with that. We've had, sent an email out about some, council has exposed, if any member, this, this member that came back as negative, it's been a minute later, there's a negative case. We're requiring everybody to sit out for two weeks and come out with positive tests, a retest. We're not taking any, any, any chances on that. We've got plenty of staff to handle that, we're working, you know, they'd like to get more hours, but we hired more people just in case they had to sit out and, you know, get the blood. We're planning to move forward with football. However, now when the start of football is, we're planning. We got a plan, we prepared, you know, so we haven't made that, you know, decision to move forward yet, so. With football, there's not as much. Baseball, there's a lot of national organizations and groups out there, but baseball's not as many as football. So we're an independent group, we won't follow anybody's, so we're ours. So, you know, we're planning, but we will, we will have a discussion next week at a regular board meeting, but it's, it's too early to tell what that's going to look like yet. But we, you know, we've changed our practices in how we operate, you know, from the guys visiting the parks to the sanitation. We're just doing, spreading out more and doing more sanitation, and so far, it's working.
Do you feel like you're, can you, anything that comes back from the study changes?
Yeah, we, we monitor that, and if, you know, we're just up or down, you know, what, what the state mandates are. Speaking, while I'm here, Firdapp, it's still, we're not getting cut in the, in the veto's, so we've got 50,000 for Hare Park, 50,000 for Douglas, and the Coliseum, 55,000 was detayed. We have not heard yet on the trail, grants that the governor, the pipe, say, they've been easy, almost three, over $300,000 for one of them, so, but keep it low and quiet, so obviously, you think, but, so, no, by tomorrow.
I have a team, and we're, it's right here. Other questions?
I have anything, Mr. Scott? Just, probably not the time to get into a big discussion, but the last time we talked about going to Powell and with the day camp, they're running, they're very impressed with what they're doing, running, to show that teachers involved, standing distance, sanitation stations, we're doing, you know, what, what we did. So, it's probably, from that programmatic standpoint, I think we're, 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 um, listen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Scott. We are going to obtain the keys to the facility, and we'll be treated like every other facility going forward for anyone that's leasing or renting or using one of our buildings. We will hold the keys, and they're going to be guarded, or they go in, they go to the facility, and they decide who can't come, because they decided they're going to occupy every day. So that, that's about to take place.
I think that was discussed, I know, you, you were probably, you know, right, but appreciate that, Bill. Thank you. Mr. Avrili, do you want to talk about upcoming weekend events real quick, before I move on here?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for the opportunity to address the board members and the public today about the Fourth of July here in Live Oak in Swanee County. We're a very patriotic community, and we certainly didn't want to not have a Fourth of July celebration. So we are having a drive-in event. We are encouraging people to come in their cars, but maintain social distancing between their car and the next car, beginning at 7:00 in our downtown area, so parking at Paul Langford Stadium in the county commission buildings, parking lots, so where the tax offices and the property appraisers offices, as well as the streets around, so Swanee, Wilbur, Pine, and Church, and then Heritage Square. And then we have a live broadcast, a Facebook Live program, and I thank many of you for participating in that. That starts at 7:00 at the CRA Facebook page, and it features messages, inspirational messages from our elected officials, as well as interviews with our Korean War veterans, as well as Mr. Kerry from the Health Department talking about our, our health heroes. It'll also be simulcast on WMLOLP 97.1 FM. So if you can't get Facebook Live on your phone or on your tablet in your car, you can listen to the program on your FM radio from your car. And then at 9:20, we're anticipating a spectacular fireworks show from Marshall Beck. So we're really pleased to be able to do this for the city, and we want, and the community in Swanee County. We just every, want everybody to be safe during this holiday weekend. We certainly don't want to see a spike that we saw after Memorial Day. And so that's why, when we began planning for this six weeks ago, this was the route that we chose. And so I, I have to thank Greg Scott and everybody at Swanee Parks. They've been a big help in our planning. The police department for the city of Live Oak, the sheriff's office, and our fire department have all been stand-up and supportive of this event. And so we look forward to seeing everybody in their cars on Saturday. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Special.
Will people be allowed to, because this is just, because I've got, we've got the same program, I have a program down in Bradford, and, and I really haven't gotten all the information on it, it is a drive-in. So will people be able to, let's say they have pickup truck and a backup, will they be able to go, get out into the bed of the truck and watch? Because there, most cars have roofs, and they're not going to be able to look up high enough, so especially if they got kids in the backseat. So how much leeway are, are families allowed around their car?
So we're not requiring people to stay in their car, and we actually think people will get out of their cars or into the beds of their trucks to watch the fireworks. The most important thing is maintaining that social distancing when you park. That's what's important, and that's why it's a drive-in event, but it's not a stay in your car as a captive event. But please, as Mr. Kerry said, you know, have your masks on and, and maintain the social distancing around, you know, create a little bubble for yourself and your family from the, the rest of the populace. So just try to stay safe, but still, you know, enjoy each other and America.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I've just had a question. For Richard, you mentioned, is it drive-in? Have they canceled any of the events on there, or is everything still at its place?
No, they, I tried to get ahold of Councilman Saunders, the president, the president of the council, about the festival. As far as I heard yesterday from his wife, was the parade still on, the festival still on, it's an evening festival, and, and the fireworks are still on, so. And that's a great, yes. If you ask me the times, I know the festival's supposed to start at about 5:00 in the afternoon and go to 8:00. And then the, I think fireworks begin at 9:00, and I kept very worried before, because I hadn't yet figured it out.
I think that has the St. Door Hatch Park.
Yeah, that's the festival race. The duck race is over at Ivy Park.
Is that what it's at?
Yeah, over at the river, but I'm not sure about the duck race at all. That's usually happens around noon.
Duck race is at 2:00?
2:00, is it? Okay.
I think, I believe the parade is at 5:30, if I'm not mistaken.
5:30, so.
It's either 5:00 or 5:30 on the parade.
So I got to get, I got to get this festival figured out, because I forgot parade and the festival start at the same time.
And, and we've provided them 500,000 masks to make available previously, so that's what we told them to encourage folks to mask up if they're going to be out.
I think the vendors are 6:00 to 9:00, and the fireworks are 9:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 9:00. I know that the, the Hatch Park has to be, Hatch Park is supposed to be empty before they begin fireworks, so not, that's why I'm, not exactly. So not, that's why I'm, not exactly sure.
So it's got to be figured out. Am I putting the right time down?
I've written times down before and they apparently have changed.
Anyone else before I, I started, Mr. Richardson's closing. Say, has anybody got anything else? Or, Mr. Fleming? I wish I could. Mr. Gandel?
Only thing I have, and I know it's not really out there publicly yet, but it has been, still see it on Facebook. But Jamie, I just want to thank you. You've been an asset to us on a lot of things by writing true and accurate stories, not fake news. Just want to say thank you.
We're going to miss your, your write-ups.
No. The paper, I hope you heard the paper, it's actually closing down. So pulling out, Swanee County, the council is closing down. I agree with Mr. Gandel. We appreciate you getting, you've done right in the house in Swanee County and the city up here as well. Being as true and accurate as you can, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
And I want to thank Ms. Stevens who's been here for a couple of months. She's been working on a project with us, we're not quite there yet, but I want to thank you guys today. I don't have anything myself. I just want to be safe, enjoy the weekend. Thank you, guys.
Motion. Second, all moves out.
Thank you, guys.